Okay, Amy, Mr. Pennington is trying to log on right now, so he will be our last member.
Okay, thank you.
Janice, you're muted.
There, now can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting, the Oklahoma City Planning Commission for Thursday, June the 11th, 2020. We're meeting by video conference because of the continued need for us to maintain social distancing. Getting a little bit of feedback there. Thank you in advance for your participation and your patience. With this change in format, we're doing things a little bit differently. So here are a few things you need to know. If the video conference is disconnected at any time, during the meeting, the meeting will stop and it will reconvene once the connection is restored. If for any reason communications cannot be restored within 30 minutes, those items which have not been heard will be continued to the next regularly scheduled meeting of the Planning Commission, which I believe is July the 9th, 2020, at 1:30 PM, which will also be conducted by video conference. The agenda and documents are located on OKC.gov. Staff will present each item to be heard, summarizing the application and identifying any points remaining to be resolved. Anyone who wishes to speak about an agenda item or speak under citizens, we heard, hopefully you'll have previously notified staff by phone or email, or will have signed up online, and I'll call on you to speak at the appropriate time. If not, I'll also call for public comment on each agenda item, and anyone who calls in after their item can be heard, after their item has been heard, will be allowed to speak under citizens to be heard. When called upon to speak, participants should state their name and address with a record. All comments and questions should be directed to the commission. Because of the unusual circumstances and the challenges of this format will hold pretty strictly to our time limits. So please be brief. If more than one person wishes to speak on an item, please try not to repeat comments already made. As participants call in, staff will mute, well, unmute, yes, will mute participants' line. So keep your line on mute until you're recognized to speak, and to unmute, you press star six. Staff will not mute commissioners, who are allowed to ask questions or comment at any time during the meeting. However, I would ask each of the commissioners to make them, to mute themselves unless they wish to speak. Just using the mute on your device, otherwise the background noise can be distracting. Please remember, only one person can be heard at a time. If more than one person speaks, neither one can be heard. There'll be a roll call every 30 minutes if necessary. So let's call this meeting to order. I'm still getting some feedback, and for some reason, I have a Prime Gov instead of a Zoom screen. There's Mary. So, I understand Jeff Butler's not with us today, so JJ, are you here? Ready to go?
I'm here, I'm ready.
Okay.
Janice, may I interrupt? I'm sorry, I'm not showing Mary back on Prime Gov.
Okay.
So. Mary, you're muted.
Miss, Mrs. Chair, Powers, this is Frances, and of course, due to timing, you can go ahead and take voice votes from those who aren't able to vote online.
Okay, thank you.
So you can just ask them yea or nay, or they can speak up at the motion, when the motion's called.
Okay.
Thank you.
So now I'm experiencing a little bit of technical difficulty. My Prime Gov screen on my laptop has disappeared, and I have a Prime Gov screen on my iPad, but I think we know from experience that it doesn't work very well. I did have this set up for the Zoom part of it. So I'm not quite sure what's happening here. It must still have Zoom because I can see a little box down in the corner.
I mean, I believe, are you still?
Yes, ma'am. I believe that your iPad is still seeing the Zoom, but they're displaying the Prime Gov on it. So it appeared to be the Prime Gov screen, but it is still, in fact, the Zoom. So on your laptop, you should still have your Prime Gov.
But I don't seem to. Let me see what I can do about that.
Cindy, are you able to see her in Prime Gov?
Janice is connected in Prime Gov.
I am. So I don't have that, I don't have that on my laptop screen, so I can't see it.
Okay, what you might need to do on your laptop screen is go to the bottom where you see that Chrome icon that will, and if you'll click on it, it might bring up your your Prime Gov again for you.
Oh, it sure did, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
So I still show, I still show Ms. Coffey not connected into Prime Gov.
Do we need to take a minute?
Cindy, just do roll call vote for her. She will just say yea or nay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so the first item on the agenda is the receipt of the minutes of the May 28th, 2020 meeting.
Motion received. I'll wait for a button.
So I have a motion by Aces Smith, Highsmith, and a second by Mike Privet. That's not right, is it?
That's right, I'll beat him.
Oh. To receive the minutes of the May 28th meeting, cast your votes, please.
I. I guess I'm going to.
Is Mr. He? Is Mr. Hinkle on with us? Do we know?
I show him connected in Prime Gov.
I see him in Zoom, but no microphone. Excuse me, yeah, he's muted.
Hello, hello?
Hello?
Can you hear me?
I can. Can you, do you have your Prime Gov?
I do, but it's not giving me the availability to vote, so I vote yes. And it happened last time, too. It wouldn't ever give me the availability to vote or make a move per second. So I can see Aces, and I can see Michael Privet, and I can see that it passed, and it shows that I voted yes, but I don't have the ability to vote.
Hey, Hinkle, what browser are you using?
I have no idea.
Commissioner Coffey, I vote yes. I don't see a vote on yet either.
Well, if we have to, we can do voice votes for Commissioners Coffey and Hinkle, but.
I'm gonna have to, because I can't vote.
I suspect some people are having pop-ups blocked and not allowing the window to come up.
Okay, well, in any event, the motion carried, and the minutes are received. Next item on the agenda is continuance requests. Can you read those for us, please, Mr. Chambliss?
We have three uncontested requests. First is item 19, DA 26084, deferred to July 9th. Item 23, Spud 1217, deferred to July 9th, and item 24, Spud 1220 to July 9th as well.
Is there anybody who wanted to be heard on any of those items? If not, I'll take a motion. Oh, I can't quite get used to this. I wish you would, you would make your motions out loud. I have a motion by Scott Cravens, a second by Mike Privet. Cast your votes, please.
Hinkle votes yes.
Thank you. The motion carries. Those items are continued. We have one new continuance request, I believe.
This is item 20, PC 10665, applicant request to continue to July 9.
Is there anyone present who wishes to be heard on this item? If not, I'll take a motion.
Claire, motion to approve.
Call for each second of the motion.
I have a motion and a second to approve, to continue. Item number 20, cast your votes, please. Oh, I can't, I haven't, I don't do that yet.
I'm sorry, should I change it to Mary Coffey for the second instead of Mike Privet?
Um, I think so, yes.
Hinkle was a yes.
Thank you. I think that's backwards. You show it was moot, okay, I'm sorry.
Is that right?
That's right, I think.
We're waiting on two votes. Mr. Pennington, got him.
And the motion carries. So the next item on the agenda is the consent docket. These are items that are relatively straightforward. There's no protest on any of them, and we are moderately confident of their passage, and therefore we vote on them as a block. Would you read those for us, Mr. Chambliss?
Yeah, I can see, six items on the consent docket today. Item 1, C 6562 is the extension of preliminary plat of Sycamore Gardens. It's north of Southwest 15th Street, east of Check Hall. Item 2, C 7164 is the preliminary plat of Sycamore Gardens, Section 4, same location. Item 3, C 7165, final plat of Palermo Place 4, that's south of 134th and west of Western. Item 4, 7167, final plat of The Grove, being part of, listly, it's located west of Portland and south of 192nd. Item 5, C 7169, final plat of Valencia Park 22, located south of 192nd and west of Penn. Item 6 is CE 1019, an application to close the west 300 feet of an east-west alley located east of Brookline and south of Southwest 8th Street.
Is there anyone present who wishes to be heard on any of these items? If not, I'll take a motion.
Aces moved.
Hi, second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent docket. Cast your votes, please.
Hinkle was a yes.
Thank you. And the motion carries. Items 1 through 6 are approved.
Janice, this is Susan. You need to be sure, you need to be sure and get Mary's vote by voice if she's not voting. It's, I don't know if her voting is working now. It wasn't earlier, but.
I believe it is. It showed on that, on that vote.
Okay, thank you. Just making sure.
So the next item on the agenda is items requiring separate votes.
All right, first item for public hearing is item 7, it's PUD SP 1674B. It's an application for a specific plan in PUD 1674, located 73, or excuse me, 3700 Northeast 104th Street. And this is an application for one building in a development known as Fusion Industrial Park. It's located west of I-35, just south of Hefner Road. Staff's review found it to be, meet the requirements of the PUD, and Brody Tucker represents the application.
JJ, is this the first specific plan under the PUD?
No, there was one other.
And so an overall sign plan was submitted at that time?
If they proposed any signs, when they do propose signs, they will come to the Planning Commission. Freestanding sign.
So it does not apply to the attached signage, is what you're saying?
No, ma'am.
Okay, I was a little confused by that language in the staff report. Okay. Commissioners, do we have any questions of our applicants? If not, I'll ask, is there anyone present who wishes to be heard on this item?
We're here if anybody does have any questions. Otherwise, you know, this is similar to the previous buildings that were approved in specific plan process in the development already. And the signage, Janice, to answer your question specifically, it is directly attached to the buildings.
Thank you.
You bet.
Commissioners, I'll take a motion.
This is, this is Commissioner Pennington. I'm happy to move approval of item 7.
One second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item number 7. Cast your votes, please.
Commissioner Coffey votes yes.
Commissioner Hinkle votes yes, but for some reason now I'm able to vote on my screen, so see if that works.
It seems to. The item carries. The item carries.
Okay, item 8, application for deed approval, 26094, by Omar and Christina Khalil. Property located at 4520 North Grand Boulevard, and this will require a variance to Section 344 C2F of the sub-rare. This is an application to split the property to create one more residential lot. Because the property has already been split twice, that is the limit for administrative deed approvals. So any further lot splits come to the Planning Commission and require a variance. Christina Khalil is the applicant.
Commissioners, this is a, this is an odd little piece of property. If you happen to be by it, it is really tucked away in a quiet little neighborhood, north of a little church property. It was a huge, huge lot at one time. It's been split and split again, and now this final portion, they're seeking to have split to permit two single-family homes. They'll have enormously long lots, but you know, they'll have, they'll take their frontage from Grand Boulevard, which at this point is not, doesn't really go anywhere else. It doesn't attach to the north, and it's not, it's not any kind of frontage road or anything on the Lake Hefner Parkway. This is really, really tucked back in a quiet little spot. I have no problem at all with approving the lot split. I think it'll be a wonderful use of the property to have a couple more houses in there.
This is Commissioner Claire. I have a question probably for staff. Is Grand Boulevard paved north of Northwest 44th Street?
So it's not, it's not improved at the same standard that the area south of 44th Street is.
It's not a curb and gutter section?
No, it's not. The right-of-way extends to the north end of this property, but the, the street is not improved at the same standard.
So is there any requirement under these lot, for these lots to be developed, that to Grand be improved?
That's really a decision that will come at the time of building permit. There are other options that they could extend it with a revocable permit to do something less than city standard. They could connect a driveway to the end and.
Yeah, and that, and that's my only question, because as you look at it right now, it looks like the south lot has a driveway, but the north lot does not, so.
They'll have to extend that to provide access to the northern portion of the lot. But yeah, I think it's probably more apt to think of this portion of Grand, north of 44th, has just a long driveway. It's not really what you would think of as a street. Anyone else? Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard on this item today? If not, I'll take a motion.
I know that the chair can't move approval, and this is in her ward, but just for the sake of process, are we needing, should we take a motion to approve item 8 and just assume that it requires the six necessary votes? Or does the motion need to read that we are approving the variance?
That's a good question. Staff, what's your advice on that?
I think you should vote on the variance and then the item.
Okay.
I agree.
Thank you.
Thanks, Susan.
Then I go ahead and move variance as requested in item 8 to Section 3.4.4. C. Point 2, subsection F.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the variance to item number 8. Cast your votes, please.
Commissioner Coffey, yes.
Commissioner Hinkle, yes.
Thank you both. The item passes.
Then, Madam Chair, I move approval, approval, excuse me, of item 8.
Oh, you're right, I'm sorry.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item number 8. Cast your votes, please.
Commissioner Coffey, yes.
Hinkle, yes.
Item 8 is approved. Thank you. Item 9?
So item 9 is the preliminary plat for The Grove, Phase 15. It is located west of North Portland Avenue, north, northwest 178th Street. The developer's proposing 113 single-family lots and one common area on 27.91 acres, yielding a gross residential density of 4.04 dwelling units per acre. The site is currently in PUD 1111, and tracks 2, 3, and 18 of that PUD. The predominant zoning in there is R1. Lots in this plat range in size from 6,000 to 14,000 square feet. Access to the development will be taken through previous phases of The Grove, primarily Section 11. The Grove subdivision occupies the majority of an entire section, so these connections within the subdivision lead back to Northwest 178th, Northwest 192nd, North Portland, and North May. So they have more than adequate connectivity for the entire subdivision. There are five TEs. The applicant is in agreement with the TEs, and Tim Johnson, with Johnson and Associates, is representing the applicant, and should be on the line in case you have any questions.
Commissioners, do we have any questions of our applicants? Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard on this item? Neither appearing to be the case. I will take a motion.
Madam Chair, hearing no, no other comment on it. The staff report notes that the preliminary plat complies with subdivision regulations, and the applicant's in agreement with the TE. So I'll make a motion to approve C 7166, subject to the technical evaluations as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item number 9. Cast your votes, please.
Hinkle is yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Privet?
Oh, sorry.
Motion passes, and item number 9 is approved.
Item number 10 is the preliminary plat for Annecy East. It is located north, or excuse me, south of Northwest 150th Street and west of North MacArthur Boulevard. They're proposing 147 single-family residential lots and four common areas on 75.52 acres, yielding a gross residential density of 1.95 dwelling units per acre. They're proposing private streets with this subdivision. They're proposing private streets with this subdivision. The site is currently zoned R one. Lots in this subdivision will range in size between sixty seven hundred square feet and twenty thousand square feet. Access to development will be taken from one median divided connection with North MacArthur Boulevard. They're proposing an emergency access, a gated emergency access that will be permanent at the end of Saint Reese Court, which will also access North MacArthur Boulevard. There are five TEs. The applicant is in agreement with TEs one, three, four, and five. They are requesting a variance to TE two to the subdivision regulations, which requires interconnection between quarter sections and then also connections with adjacent parcels. That is section five point three point one, point B, point five. Tim Johnson with Johnson and Associates is representing the applicant, and he is on the line if you have any questions.
I do have a question. I'm just a little bit confused here with respect to. The access. Page eight of the staff report indicates that the proposed preliminary plat request to revise the eastern half of a preliminary plat approved twenty nineteen, so very recently. And the new preliminary plat removes an east west street connection over the creek that would have provided access to the western half of the subdivision. And so I'm, I'm curious about what has changed to prompt you to seek that change to the preliminary plat?
Yes, this is Tim Johnson. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. So we did not start this project. There was another engineering firm involved originally. And there, it was a layout, a street configuration and layout that included quite a bit of encroachment into the waters of the United States. There are five locations on this site where we're dealing with the Corps of Engineers on waters of the United States. So when we got involved, it was at the stage of needing to do something with the Corps. And as a result, we determined it would be better if we redesigned the subdivision to basically leave the Corps alone and mitigate the requirements and cost of Corps of Engineer improvements. In addition to that, an oil company came in and took a very large piece property on the west side of the creek, which is the Lake Sedanacy that I think you've already seen, which then created an impact to the, the whole addition by losing the number of lots we could get yield totally. So the developer made the decision at that time that the cost, the, the seven hundred and fifty thousand to a million dollar bridge that it was going to take across the creek was not cost effective. And so therefore, we designed it as two subdivisions. And we were taking all of our access on this subdivision from MacArthur. The Lake Sedanacy, which is on the other side of the creek, is taking two entry points off of one hundred and fiftieth Street. And this variance that we're asking for is really a variance to make connectivity to the R two tract that we don't own to the northeast. And because we're private streets, we did not want to create a stub up there to duplex development. It's a very narrow duplex lot tract. And then commercial on the hard corner.
Okay, well, that answers one of my questions because I, I was a little confused about exactly what the variance was. So that, that relates to your access to the north.
Correct.
Okay, okay. Commissioners, do we have any questions of our applicants?
This is Commissioner Cravens. I don't have any questions. I just, I was gonna kind of remind people it's if you're in the Twilight Zone or you feel like you've seen this before, it's because you have. As Tim said, this came through once before. We had the discussion about connectivity and private streets. The issue with that natural separation in the middle, apparently since Tim's referring to them as waters of the United States, he floated a log test on that thing. Very nicely done there, Tim. And, but we, we debated this before. I, I looked at it again. I don't have any concerns given that discussion we had previously or the way that it sets out. Again, two points of access, taking out the separate streets, they cut it in half. It's not ideal, but I think it makes sense given the, the difficulties with the site. So I'm, I'm in support of the application. Nope, no issue with the variance for me. If other commissioners want to make comments, please feel free. Otherwise, I'll make a motion when we're ready.
Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard on this item? If not, I'll take a motion.
Hearing no further discussion, I will first make a motion to approve the variance to C seventy one sixty eight, varying section five point three point one, point D five of the subdivision regulations.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Commissioner Coffey to approve the variance to item number ten. Cast your votes, please.
Henkel, yes.
Thank you. The motion is approved.
I'll make a motion to approve the application for C seventy one, six, eight. Item number ten on today's agenda.
I have a motion and a second. By Commissioner Privet to approve item number ten. Cast your votes.
Commissioner Coffey votes yes.
Thank you.
Henkel, yes.
Thank you. The item is approved.
Item eleven is SP five forty four. It's an application by American Fidelity Property Company for a hospital located at eighty five sixteen Broadway Extension. This is a two acre site. It's located east of Broadway Extension at Northeast eighty fifth Street. Request for a fairly small hospital and surgery center. It includes seven patient rooms and three surgical suites. Staff review determined it meets the standards for special permit and recommends approval with no TEs. Tim Johnson represents the applicant.
Commissioners, do we have any questions of our applicants? Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard on this item? If not, I'll take a motion.
I move approval of item eleven.
I have a motion and a second. Thank you. I have a motion and a second to approve item number eleven. Cast your votes, please.
Commissioner, yes.
Coffey, yes.
Thank you. Item number eleven is approved.
Item twelve, S P U D twelve nineteen is an application by Ramjack American Leveling to rezone sixty two twenty five Shiloh Boulevard to new S P U D. This is a one acre site. It's located on Shiloh Boulevard, which is just south of Fifty Ninth Street and west of Highway one fifty two. We're rezoning to an S P U D with an I one base, and it permits all the current uses in the existing P U D, but adds retail and construction sales and services. This represents really an expansion of the, their existing business, which is located next door to the north. And it was, and it's on Spud six forty six. It was zoned in twenty twelve to add construction sales and services. Staff found it to be in conformance with urban load Luda and consistent with the area and recommends approval with one T E that the applicant is in agreement with, and Mark Grubbs represents the applicant.
Commissioners, do we have any questions of our applicants? Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard on this item? If not, I'll take a motion.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry. I do have a quick question, just for the sake of clarification on the I one. Even the construction sales, that still is required to be endorsed too. Just wanted to just make sure I was clear, right?
Yes.
If there are no further questions, Commissioner Coffey, I recommend approval of S P U D one. Subject to technical evaluation one.
Claire, second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item number twelve. Cast your votes, please.
Henkel, yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Coffey?
I'm sorry, is mine not recording yet?
Thank you. The motion passes. Item twelve is approved.
Item thirteen, Spud twelve twenty three, application by TJK Investments to rezone fourteen four twenty nine Southeast Fifty Ninth Street from the A A Agricultural District to the, to Spud twelve twenty three. This is a two, about a two and a half acre site on the north side of Southeast Fifty Ninth, east of Henni Road. And we're going from AA to a Spud with a RC rural commercial base. There's two buildings currently on the site. One is a commercial building on the front and a building that used to be a church building in the back. There's paved and gravel parking in place that the Spud intends to utilize. Staff found it to be in conformance with rural low Luda, which supports one to two acres of limited commercial to support rural residents. Recommend approval with no TEs. Robert Kohler is the applicant.
I'm sorry, I do have one question with respect to the parking. Does the parking that they have meet the requirement or it, you know, it's sort of deeming that it does? How far off are we?
It's, it's hard to say since it's not paved and striped. Well, the portion in front is, but they have a paved area to the east and then a gravel area north of that. I think it would satisfy the required number of spaces, but they're just not there to count.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Janice, I, I'd love to throw a follow up question on that. I note that in our, our staff review under traffic, we've got kind of a typical comment here on the number of driveways. And it says it should be limited to one for safer ingress and egress. There's no technical evaluation on that, but I would like to ask the applicant respectfully if they would consider a single driveway that would help me be comfortable with the application and, and comfortable supporting it today.
Good afternoon. This is Robert Kohler, the applicant. Yes, that would be plenty fine. It's at the apex of a hill, so it does have good visual on both left and right side, but it does have two entries.
So it currently has two entries?
Currently, yes. They've been there since nineteen sixty five.
This is Commissioner Claire. I just have a question. On your outbuilding that sits behind, what kind of vehicles will you have accessing that? Will you have truck? Tractor trailer access?
No, it's actually going to be like a medical grow facility. So there's going to be very little traffic, one to two vehicles per day, if that.
So for me, although I know it's, as you point out, they're existing driveways, and this is a question for, for JJ. If we approve the Spud with one driveway, are they allowed to keep the existing and operate as a, as a nonconforming until, you know, some future redevelopment?
If we limit it to one and they come in for any kind of permit, they will have to remove that driveway.
Okay.
And that's the only reason why we didn't make it a TE because they're existing. They have been existing for some years and they have fairly good preparation.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna be punitive on this. So yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that then. Never mind.
Hey, Commissioner Claire, just for the point of clarification on your question, I just, I know, I know you know this, but I just want to make sure that it's clear that I mean, they've got retail sales and services in general, for example. So Dollar General comes along and pulls an application for this, pulls a permit and builds it. Now you're gonna have semi trucks delivering, and there's nothing to prevent that.
Yeah. Well, and my, my only point of that was I'm okay with two driveways if we're separating types of vehicles. It makes it safer.
Yeah, understood. I just want to, I didn't understand exactly why you were.
I don't know if there would be a way as the owner, but I would be more than willing to have that added into the Spud for no large vehicle traffic to be used on the property. The location is not going to be good for super high end retail as far as, you know, Dollar Generals or, or anything like that. So it's going to be a low volume type of business that's always going to work in there. You know, office spaces, delivery type of businesses, nothing that's going to need a large amount of traffic in and out.
Mr. Kohler, with all due respect, I understand that that's not your intention, but one of the things that we like to make clear, and I know there's some folks that are signed up on, to be heard on this as well, once it's rezoned, anybody can come use it. So always is a strong word, which is why I just wanted to clarify for Commissioner Claire that, that point, so.
I'd like to ask a question too before we go to hearing from community members. I noticed there's the use unit for dwelling units and mixed uses. What, what dwelling units and mixed uses, is that just any house or JJ, or what all is included in that?
It will allow residential and commercial uses in the same building together. Like if you wanted to add an apartment in the back of one of these, something like that.
But it would not allow for a standalone house, right? Or standalone apartment or?
It would have to be attached and part of the building. Okay.
JJ, this has been, these buildings have been nonconforming since forever, right?
Yes.
I do, I know we have a number of people who have submitted protest. I don't have anyone signed up to speak. Is there anyone present who wishes to be heard on this item? If not, I'll take a motion.
I'll move approval.
Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion once available. I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second to approve item number thirteen. Cast your votes, please.
Commissioner Coffey, yes.
Oh, can anybody hear me? Hello?
Yes.
I, I'm sorry. Can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, thank you so much. I, I, my name is Scott Hartzog. I live directly west of the, of the property in question for rezoning. I submitted a petition on very short notice to the, the surrounding community, and I got a very resounding no from everybody that is closest to the facility or to the, to the property. and I got a very resounding, uh, uh, no from everybody that is closest to the facility or to the, to the property in question. So I, I appreciate you letting me speak here on this. Some of the worries that we have are the, the scenic value of the property, of the actual Southeast 59th altogether with this, with whatever this front building is going to be. I'm, I'm still trying to wrap my head around what's going on with that. I know, I've been told that the back building is a medical marijuana grow, which is totally legal and not here to dispute that at all. That is, that, that's fine. I just don't know why we're, in my understanding of it, we're trying to rezone just the front building. So if I could have Robert, the, the buyer, explain to me more what his intentions are with the two buildings, that would be great. And I know there are others that want that as well.
Mr. Kohler, did you want to speak to that?
Sure. As of right now, I am the, the property owner and I have it leased to a gentleman and his first intention was to just do a medical grow. But he did say that the state was passing legislation to be able to deliver the medical marijuana and he knows that that's not a good, high-volume retail location. So he wanted to set up a business to be able to deliver it because of the good access to I-40 and the southern part of the Choctaw, the 7302 area code. So he's not wanting to get volume of traffic in there, but be able to have it in a good location to be able to go out.
So then, then, and thanks, Robert, for clarifying that. So then, the only traffic would be coming in would be the amount of, amount of business that he, he may or may not have, or she may or may not have. Meaning that, which to me is, is pretty open-ended. I mean, is that one vehicle coming and going or is that a fleet of vehicles? What does all, all of that entail? And on this petition that was signed, I don't know if the numbers are familiar, are familiar with the area, but it is, it is dangerous because people drive, you know, it, the speed limit is 50, but people drive a lot faster than that. It is on top of the hill and, I mean, living right next door to it, you don't stop at that stop sign to pull out on Southeast 59th. If there's nobody coming, you just go because it's just, people come flying over that hill. So I'd have real safety concerns just about the, the area. And now we're talking about, you know, people using that to stage a way to sell and delivering it to people, as I understand, which seems like that's only going to impact that further negatively to me.
From, from my understanding, based off of what I talked to on the previous donor, they had, and, and I don't know this number exactly, but, you know, upwards of 200 people for their church, maybe it wasn't that much, but 150, 200, somewhere in there. And the amount of traffic would be drastically less than it was for the previous tenant that was in there for, I believe, 12 to 15 years. So the number of traffic would definitely go down.
That, that is the case. That was Delbert Reed, Pastor Delbert Reed across there that had the church. But that traffic was on Sundays and, and church traffic on Sundays in the morning is not really what it is. You know, Monday through however long you plan to stay open, I mean, your hours of operation, you know. I think you had mentioned to me on a previous phone call that, that eight o'clock would be the time that you would be winding that down ever, at night. So I guess I want to ask, you know, what, what are the days of operation and what would the hours be?
I, I would be more than willing to adjust them to, you know, fit the community. I would want, as a neighbor to it, for it to be something that I would be happy with too. If, if eight o'clock in the PM was sufficient for me to tell my tenants to shut down, I would be more than happy to tell them that. I don't believe that they're going to be open past eight and I don't believe that they're going to be open on Sundays. And not open until probably 10 to 11 a.m.
Okay, will you repeat those, please?
They do not believe to be open past 8 p.m. and won't open until 10 to 11 a.m. and will be closed on Sundays.
Okay, so that's 10 a.m. to 8 p.m., Monday through Saturday.
Saturday. And I don't believe the traffic to be very much at all. It's hard for me to say based off of somebody else's deal, but the two people that are doing it are a husband and wife and they don't have employees. So it would be one person there and one person delivering.
Okay, so it would just be one, it'd be, it'd just be one vehicle delivering then, correct?
To my knowledge, yes, that is correct.
Okay. I mean, if, if it turns into a fleet of people coming and going, I mean, what, what's to say that can't happen, to play the devil's advocate?
Yeah, I, I totally understand where you're coming from. I, I, I don't foresee that happening and, you know, if there was some way to write it down that I could keep them from that, but, because what they're leasing the building for is not that. So that would have to be at least three years from now.
I might say, it sounds, it's to me like, it sounds to me as if the issues to be resolved here really have more to do possibly with lease terms than they do with the zoning. And so perhaps if you two would like to exchange information, if you don't have it already. Did I, did I hear somebody say that you'd already talked by phone? If there are, if there are details about the operation that you think need to be worked out, perhaps that's something that you might do privately between yourselves, between now and the time this matter lands at city council.
I, I'm all for, I'm all for trying to, 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 you know, work this, work this out. I was always a good neighbor with Delbert Reed, with the church next door. I want to be a good neighbor. I just want to know what our community is getting into because like I said earlier, everybody is surrounding that piece of property to be rezoned is not comfortable with the open-endedness of what can or can't be done with the property. So, I mean, I don't know if I'm speaking out of turn here, but it, might it be better that, that, Robert, that you kind of get together with us, being that all the people that signed the petition, which there were 14 of the houses close by in the closest proximity, to determine, you know, what you're getting into, what we're getting into, so that there's no surprises for anybody. I'd, I'd be willing, more than willing to meet and further discuss that.
Yeah, I'm available anytime.
Does, does that mean that we should move this motion to table this motion then, for this zoning until, hammer out?
Madam Chair?
Well, at the moment, excuse me, at the moment, I have a motion to approve, a motion and a second, and we have cast our votes, I believe. And so...
I don't believe it was passed out yet. This is Susan.
We have cast votes.
We have cast votes.
We have cast votes.
We have cast votes. So...
The only, the only, excuse me, the only, thank you very much. The only reason why I'm speaking up, speaking out of turn as late as I did was I was having technical difficulties trying to...
I understand. I understand.
129, to, to, to have our point of view heard.
So someone give me a bit of advice here about what would be required if we were going to seek to continue this item rather than vote on it today? What would need to be done at this point?
Well, you would need to do a motion to reconsider your vote. And then make another motion to continue it.
Our, our vote has not been tallied yet, I don't believe.
Yeah, Susan, they haven't voted. They have a motion and second and the mover and secondor can request their motion be withdrawn and then you're back to the item.
Okay, that's what I was asking a while ago and I was told that they already voted, so.
We have cast our votes. It, they, they have not been tallied, I'll put it that way.
Okay. Then yes, you can just either amend your motion or withdraw it and make another motion to continue.
Commissioner Privet, this is in your ward, it was your motion?
Yes, I will withdraw my motion and move for a continuance so the landowners can meet with the developer.
Is the applicant in agreement with taking, it'll be a month till July the 9th, to meet with the neighbors and see if these matters can be resolved?
Yes, that sounds good. What, let's say I, let's say I get eight out of nine, 10 things that they like and everything's good, but there's one thing that we can't agree on, what will that mean next time we come to the same position?
Well, we'll have to wait and see. You already had a, a pretty good chance of getting it approved today, so we'll see what happens.
Okay. That works for me as the landowner.
So I have a motion to continue this item until the July 9th meeting. Do I have a second?
Claire, second.
I'll give our staff just a second to adjust that. I have a motion and a second to continue item number 13 until July the 9th. Cast your votes, please.
Hinkle, yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Coffey? Commissioner Coffey?
Mr. Chairman, if he appears muted.
The motion passes and the item is continued. Item 14?
Sorry, I was muted. Item 14 is P U D 1767. Application by Bentwood Investment to rezone 1800 Northwest 115th Street from R1 to P U D 1767. This is a 22-acre site that's going from R1 to a P U D with an R3 base. The application has been amended since you last saw it on May 28th to eliminate multifamily as a permitted use. Now permits single family through four family. Staff found it to be in conformance with the urban low luda. Recommends approval with two T E's and David Box is the applicant.
Commissioners, this is a, an item that has undergone quite a lot of, well, amendment and, and change since it was first admitted. The basic overall idea for the, for the development, I think, is the same. It was always intended to be a residential development. But meetings, heated meetings with the neighbors to the east and our educational neighborhood to the north have, I think, yielded a better product, frankly. There's been agreement by the applicant to limit the type of, of housing on the eastern half, is it half? Eastern side of the property that backs up to the neighborhood to the east to single or duplex development. And a number of, of small changes, a specific plan will be submitted. Plating will be done. These are going to be private streets. There'll be signage posted as, in accordance with Public Works' desire to indicate that city maintenance of the streets is not being done and so on. And, Mr. Box, did you have, did you want to tell us more about this?
Sure. So David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. Chairman Powers, myself, my client, have had multiple meetings with, with both different neighborhood groups. The neighbors to the east, the residential neighbors, as well as the Heritage Hall folks to the north. I, I think at first there was a little bit of confusion as to what its current zoning, that being R1 would, I guess dictate would be built. When we walked through and kind of explained what neighbors were getting here compared to what can be built pursuant to R1, I, I think there was an overall level of satisfaction with what the product was that the neighbors were going to get. And then my client further went in and has agreed to some, some efforts that will seek to, I think, make better currently bad traffic situations that exist along Bel Air, which is the north-south thoroughfare street in the neighborhood to our east. So all of those things combined, the, the last Zoom conference we got, I think the, the sense that both myself and my client, as well as, I think, the chair received, was that there was support and at least satisfaction with all the modifications that we were able to, to come up with. There, there are two T E's. The first being a request that we agree with, but we would ask to modify it a bit so that the common area can be spread across the development and not just in that southwest corner. And then, you know, it talks about the protection of the trees. We're going to protect the trees where feasible, but it is anticipated that southwest portion is going to have to have our detention facilities there. If you were to look at a flood map, you'd see that the southwest portion has both flood plain and floodway. And so inevitably, there will be a scenario in which some trees have to be removed. The staff has seen to try to, I guess, remedy that by asking that if new trees are not, or if trees are not retained, that new trees shall be planted in common area to achieve a ratio of one tree per 3,000 square feet. And my client does agree to that. So essentially what we're asking to be revised in T E 1 is allow us to spread the common area out over the development. In fact, I can just read into the record the language we suggest, if that is easier. What we would suggest is T E 1 to read, provide two acres of common area within the development. The common area should retain existing healthy mature trees when feasible and may contain amenities for residents. If existing trees are not retained, new trees shall be planted in the common area to achieve a ratio of one tree per 3,000 square feet of common area. T E 2, we would seek to eliminate that. It is our intention to install speed tables along Bel Air Place. Bel Air Place is the street in the neighborhood to the east. That neighborhood has experienced significant traffic problems with speeding from 115th down to Heffner. That was one of the major concessions that satisfied the neighbors. And so we do intend to build speed tables there. And so we would ask you to eliminate T E number two.
Did we ever, did we, as a city, decide that those were okay again?
No, in fact, we would object to the elimination of that T E. That, that really has no business in... That's, it's not even a part of this P U D. It's an off-site improvement that's just basically not permitted on public streets. So we would ask that that be eliminated. It doesn't really have any business in this P U D. They can attempt to do something like that privately, but it doesn't have any business in it as a P U D requirement.
Okay, so there, I think there are two issues here. One is whether it's appropriate to include that language as a T E, given that the property in question is not within the confines of the property sought to be rezoned. So that's one question and we can talk about that. But the other question, the question of the speed tables, you know, we spent a lot of years working out traffic calming techniques that, you know, the Traffic Commission initiated that were worked through at length with Public Works. I don't, I don't understand this idea that these are not allowed. It, you know, we started off with maybe a dozen traffic calming techniques. It was narrowed down to a handful, but this was definitely one of... But this was definitely one of them. I can remember that pretty clearly.
Yeah, this is Commissioner Claire. I can, I can give a little background on this. So what has gone to Traffic Commission was Public Works and a subcommittee, or excuse me, the Traffic Department and a subcommittee of Traffic Commission put together a toolbox of traffic calming techniques and they evaluated close to a dozen. And of various types. And so far to date, one of those options has been approved and I believe that is speed bumps. And to my knowledge, that's as far as it's, it's gone. So it's, it's kind of got high centered. And, and I don't, I don't know the current status of it, but in my opinion, there's been a lot of effort and a lot of background to put together a lot of options. And it's not going anywhere. So I, I completely concur, agree that, you know, these, these are all options that are valid and, and need to be pursued. But and, and, and maybe it's something as Planning Commission that we can help, help nudge along. But, but that's, that's kind of the background is there, there has been a lot of effort. But we can't seem to get some of these options approved.
Well, I think we're about to get there. And I think this case is, is what's going to allow us to, to help us get there. This is very, very, very important to the council person for this ward. I understand that Public Works has not found a way to have what they need. I have no idea why. But it's hard for me to imagine why all over the country, cities have figured out how to use speed tables. And we're unable to figure out how to do it. There are agreements with neighbors and PUDs, I think, all the time. Understanding it's an off-site improvement. I understand the current view of speed tables as we sit here today. I'm here to tell you that by the time this item gets to council, perhaps there's a different view and it is critically important to the neighbors, my client, the council person, that this be a part of the, the document.
And I'll, I'll go even a little bit further than that. I mean, we, you know, we had multiple discussions with the neighbors. They were righteously indignant about the idea of this development. They had a, they were quite vociferous about their objections to it. Until, and, and it was mostly because of the traffic issues that they face. When this proposal was made by the applicant, it, it completely changed their view of this development. I don't think I have anybody, I don't have anybody signed up. We'll see, I guess, when we get around to that part, whether there's anybody, you know, who's, who's listening in and wants to speak on this item from the neighborhood to the east. But if not, it is because of this agreement. I don't often go against staff on things like this, but I want to see this TE eliminated and I want this language retained.
I, I would at least consider David rewording it a little bit. To say they shall be built if for some reason in the future they cannot be. You're tied up in a PUD with something you have no control over.
Right. So we could say they shall be built pursuant to approval by the City of Oklahoma City, since it is a public street.
You can put some kind of caveat like that in there.
I'm fine.
Well, I don't think there's any question that since it's a public street, there's not going to be anything that is done over there, you know, to Bel Air that is, is not being approved by the city. I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I don't anticipate the city saying no and you'll find me out there on a weekend installing a speed table of my own, just to make, make good on this promise.
Install one here too, because we've been wanting them for years and not been able to.
Well, Commissioner, I hope this case is going to get each of you the ability to have speed tables in your ward where you so desire.
I don't see how that happens, but okay.
Hey, JJ, can, can you give, this Commissioner Cravens, can you give me another example of a time where we have approved or required off-site improvements outside of a a zoned parcel? This, this, I feel like we've never done this before. Is that correct or am I not right about that? David seems to say we've done this before. I don't remember one.
None come, no specific ones actually come to mind.
Can you even legally do this, David? I don't believe that you can legally do this.
Sure. It's an ordinance.
But, but what you're requiring doesn't, it's not within the, it's not within the zoned area. It's not within the ordinance you're creating.
It's a totally different property.
Well, that's fine, but it's still.
I think your, your question, Scott, is whether we could require it of him.
That's right.
We might not be able to do that legally, but he can certainly commit to doing it.
Well, that's, that, that's my point. Just so I can get this out of anybody's head, I'm all in favor of these traffic calming measures and all that being installed. I just want to be sure that neighbors are actually going to get what they're bargaining for here outside of, I mean, because this is something that I feel like should be a private agreement that was a contract that was entered between the parties, not a part of this, because I don't see how it could ever be enforced. I don't see how it could be required.
Well, and I, I did just have a text message from Mr. Johnson who said similar agreement was reached in, for a Waterford off-site drainage improvement. You would find, I'm not going to say it's lots and lots, but there are instances where off-site improvements because of agreements to be made with neighbors have been accomplished through a PUD. The idea that you have a neighborhood like this, that I believe the HOA is informal and not mandatory. And that we would go and seek to, you know, engage in a contract with all of these individuals on a public street is just not going to happen.
I'll have to have legal explain this to me later like I were three, because I, I, I don't get it. And I think this is dangerous for us to go about it this way. I get that we want to see it happen. I think it's a great idea. I, I think it's brilliant. As Mike said, I think there's, Commissioner Privet, I think there's a bunch of neighborhoods that would love to have these type of traffic calming measures, but I just don't want to set a precedent through a zoning case that isn't enforceable. That, and, and all of a sudden we have people coming in and asking us to require things of, it just, it just seems like a real slippery slope. That's all.
Again, if the city was requiring it, it would be another matter. This is a self-imposed thing that the, the developer is willing to do.
On, onto a public street?
Well, understanding the public works are going to have to sign off on it.
And that language is being, and that, that's the language that JJ suggested that you're, you're agreeing to is that so long as the City of Oklahoma City approves their installation, you're agreeing to install them.
Yeah. So the language I have and then will add, subject to review and approval by the City of Oklahoma City.
And I just want to say, this is, this is Susan. And I would, I've not seen this before either. So I mean, as far as a legal opinion, I'd want to actually research that as far as giving you a legal opinion. I mean.
I'm, I'm all for this thing. I, I can't stress that enough, especially if the neighbors and the developer are in agreement. I, I just want to make sure that we're using the tools at our disposal to create something that's precedential that could actually be used in the future. And we have confidence about the outcome. That's the only thing I'm saying.
And I think, you know, we have the option, we have the ability to resolve that issue between now and city council. So. Let me just go ahead and ask, is there anyone else who wishes to be heard on this matter? Do I have any neighbors that have been listening and waiting to speak on it? I'll give it just a little extra time. I know some of our neighbors were sort of technically challenged. If not, I'll take a motion.
Okay, well, I guess I'll, I'll be the one. I move approval of item 14 with the following amendments to the technical evaluations as read. Amend TE number one to the, oh. I'm in TE number one with the language as read into the record by Mr. Box. Amend technical evaluation number two to also reflect the revised language provided by Mr. Box.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Ankle, second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item number 14 with the amendments to TE's one and two that were read into the record. Cast your votes when you get the chance.
Ankle, yes.
Motion passes and item number 14 is approved.
Thank you.
Item 15 is PUD 1770. Application by 9,000 Broadway to rezone 8,300 Broadway Extension to PD 1770, PUC 1770. Okay, this is a on the east side of Broadway Extension at northwest 82nd Street. It's going from an existing PUD 1665. And it provides for a 30-foot, 650-square-foot multi-tenant development sign for the, the entire development extending north. Staff found it to be in conformance with urban law luda, but suggested that the, if this is truly to be the only multi-tenant development sign for this development, we should limit it to that. However, the other two PUDs to the north include their own large multi-tenant signs. So we worked with the applicant to come up with a way to limit the entire development to this one multi-tenant sign through a plat note. The, the balance of this development will be included in one subdivision. And we've had a note on the plat that states that multi-tenant development signs would be limited to the one sign in this PUD 770 as depicted on exhibit C. And that's reflected in your technical evaluation. Tim Johnson is representing the application.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'd like to add a little background to this. Were multiple PUDs done on this property simply because it was acquired over time from different entities. And so as we went forward with the development and added more land, we basically duplicated the same PUD going forward. So now that the development has moved ahead, we have public streets creating a circular condition, 82nd to Oklahoma, North to 85th, and then back to the frontage road. And the developer has engaged a national advertising agency to come up with this sign. And they have agreed, as JJ mentioned, to limit the, any further signage along the frontage road to this one large project sign. It's obviously, it's a, it's a true mixed use. It is, it's got corporate office, it's got entertainment, it's got proposed food venues and a multifamily rap project up by the lake. Once you get into this development, it drops pretty radically to the east elevation-wise and the, the PUDs do allow for additional monument signage. And we'd like to leave that in there because some of these parcels are very large. The DeLisi Corporate Office, for example, is a very large tract. Chicken and Pickle is a very large venue, as will be the apartment project. So they just want to have the ability to, none of them may be eight feet tall, or some of them may not be eight feet tall, but they're going to be unique to the user. So there'll be a project sign for the apartments. There'll be a standard Chicken and Pickle sign that they use nation, nationally. And then DeLisi will have their corporate name on a monument at the corner of Oklahoma and 82nd Street. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Or is that one TE that we do agree to?
Tim, I, I have just a few little detail questions to ask you. On, on page two of my staff report where it shows the comparison between the PUD 1665 standard and the proposed standard, it, it seems to indicate that there will be no, no landscaping at the base of the sign. Why is that?
So that's something that the staff is kind of pulling away from and understand, we understand that it's not going to be a requirement in the new sign ordinance because of lack of maintenance and lack of the ability of city staff to police that. If you've been to the addition, we have boulevard streets with trees lining both the center and the sides. All, in all the boulevards, including the private 83rd Street. So it's, this is going to be a well-manicured addition. And so there will be landscaping. It's just not going to be required landscaping. It may not have flowers. It'll have low-lined shrubs and some sort of maintenance provision in there to keep people from beating up the metal sign.
Okay. So having said all that, I'll just throw out there that it seems to me that staff may be jumping the gun a bit on what's going to be required by the new sign ordinance. And I wish they wouldn't drop these things in on this. If we're going to stop requiring things like this, it might be worth discussing with the Planning Commission and having some kind of, you know, consensus about. So there's no pole signs, but there are these kind of metal rods, it looks like, at the bottom of this sign. Is that right?
Yes, it's a, I mean, it's part of the architectural design.
Okay.
The lines going all the way through from the top to the bottom.
Okay. And do I understand correctly as I'm reading this, that, that the sign shall have a maximum sign area of 650 feet per side? In addition to EMD signage? I mean, the, the EMD signage is not part of that 650 square feet?
Yeah, and there's no EMD signage permitted in the buds that can be seen by the highway.
Okay. That's a little unclear to me from just the way it reads in the staff report. And then, and then I also, in separate page seven, the second to the last paragraph, it says monument signs, blah, 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 with structures located in this PUD or consistent with an established development theme. What, what does that language mean exactly right there?
I'm reading.
It, it seems to me to relate back to the requirement that signs with a split, that it relates back to the covered in a material consistent to the structure or consist, or consistent with a development theme.
Right.
So.
So the, the covering on the signage or the monument signage would, you know, let's say we used a slate cover on the building, we could bring that slate coverage out and be part of the signage.
But that would be a material consistent with the structure. This is an or or consistent with an established development theme.
Right. So for example, the Chicken and Pickle, they may have a, a theme based on the color of the courts and, and what they do for entertainment. So we have not seen their sign package yet. So I'm just using that as an example.
Okay. And I'm, I'm a little unclear about that. I remember when the was it the, the Humvee dealership that moved in off the very northern edge of Oklahoma City? Was it the the Humvee dealership that moved in off the very northern edge of Oklahoma City? They had this giant sign thing that they wanted to do and it was because it had big metal bolts on it and so on. It didn't meet sign code at all. But it was consistent with their theme for their vehicles and and, you know, I that just seems a little fuzzy to me. The consistent with an established development theme is a little fuzzy.
In this case, the development theme is is what you see is the yellow, the half. So one of the signs may be, you know, A B C restaurant at the half. And they may carry through this development theme of color. Or.
Okay.
Theme as part of the them being a chain restaurant or something like that.
Okay.
That's.
I I think, yeah, I get the intent. I'll just, for the record, it's a little fuzzy for me. But that's all I have. I I'm glad that we got out upfront that this is that this these signs, this sign is in addition to the monument signs that will be throughout the development. It's not an either or. Generally, when we approve tenant signs like this, it's instead of the signs for each user, the separate signs for each user. But here we're talking about doing this in addition to, so.
Then, you know, we're on a very heavily traveled highway. We have elevation challenges, so this is being located on the high spot of our property. Once you get into the property, you won't be able to look back and see this sign. And so the monument signs are intended and, you know, we're a thousand feet in from the frontage road before you turn and go up Oklahoma. And so it's a it's a very lengthy street circulation. It's public street inside there, very large property.
Okay. That's all I have. Others, commissioners, do we have questions for our applicant? Is there anyone present who wishes to be heard on this item? Not I'll take a motion.
I move approval of item fifteen.
Do I have a second?
No, sir.
I have a motion and a second to approve item number fifteen. Cast your votes.
Hinkle is a yes.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
The motion passes. The items approved.
Item sixteen is a request to annex eight point four seven acres of unincorporated Cleveland County land into the city of Oklahoma City. Susan Atkinson, planning department, has a short presentation.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Uh, yes, thank you, Cindy, for getting our screen sharing going. This is the first of three items related that you're going to to consider this afternoon. This is actually not an action item because it is an annexation request that was previously reviewed by the ad hoc annexation committee on May eleventh. So again, we'll start with just a brief description of the annexation request. Then we'll move into the comp plan amendment and then a colleague will discuss the zoning case with you. So just briefly, the city received a request to annex a eight point four acre parcel in the in that part of Oklahoma City that where Moore and Norman or Cleveland County all come together. And so you can see the parcel in the dashed red outline. It is, again, an eight point four seven acre parcel. Next slide, please. So on May eleventh, the ad hoc committee considered a staff report on this request. Again, the request raised no objections from city staff and the staff report recommended approval. The ad hoc committee subsequently voted to recommend approval to city council and council will consider this request sometime during the summer of twenty twenty. I wanted to add that the applicant's attorney is on the line and may want to tell the commission a little bit more about the process. David, are you on the line?
Yes.
Please go ahead.
Yeah, so David Box, five twenty two, Call Core Drive. Yeah, so the map that you're looking at now, my client owns everything that's outlined in white and with that, the majority of the site is already in the city of Oklahoma City. You've got this strange little swath through there in which it is an unincorporated Cleveland County. So we have one development. It's a single family development which you'll have a comp plan change next, single the rezoning application after that. And then in July, you will see the plat for this development. But in order to make this development move forward, we needed all of it to be within one jurisdictional control, that being the city of Oklahoma City. So we made application. We filed our notices with the clerk of Oklahoma City, published pursuant to the statutes. The the city's ordinances are frankly fairly silent on annexation. Out of an abundance of caution, the city puts these items through planning commission. It's debatable whether or not the planning commissioner, the statutes and ordinance ever even hear these. The ordinances or, excuse me, the statute seemed to indicate we go straight to council, but the the practice has been to go through planning commission for a recommendation, which is a bit odd because like Susan had said, we already have gone to the ad hoc committee on annexation that consisted of, as I recall, Todd Stone, David Greenwell, and Larry McAtee on this item. And they unanimously recommended approval of the annexation that will be then put forward to city council as soon as at some point this summer. So it's a it's a statutory process to annex into a municipality. And we have followed that statutory process with working through the city attorney's office as well as the city clerk's office. And we now find ourselves here before you on annexing the that small piece of the overall development.
Great, David. Thank you so much. If if there are no questions from the commission, we will move ahead into the presentation of the comp plan case before you.
And I I said, this is Susan. I have one question. And I think we do make a recommendation for approval or not on the ordinance, annexation ordinance.
Yeah, yeah, you are. What I my only point was the statute doesn't require it. The city's
Right.
policy is to have the planning commission take a vote on a recommendation.
Yes, I agree, but I think I think we do need to take an action at some point on the on this item to recommend approval or not.
You're saying before they move on to the next item on the agenda?
Yes.
I agree.
And is there anyone else who wishes to be heard on this item? If not, I'll take a motion. Or if planning, I mean, commissioners, is there any discussion to be had amongst the commissioners on this item?
This commissioner, Hinkle.
Yeah, yes.
I'm looking through the the next couple of three applications. The fire department wording for sprinkling houses has worked its way back into our conversation again, even though the city council hasn't come to terms with what they want that wording to be. And I'm just curious what our thoughts on that are.
Well, I was going to address it at the zoning.
Yeah, let's push that off until zoning.
Well, if there's no other discussion, then I'll move approval on moving this forward.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Commissioner Craven, I'll second the motion if nobody else will.
Commissioner Coffee beat you to it. I have a motion and a second to approve, to recommend approval of the Santa Fe Crossing Annexation. Cast your votes, please.
Hinkle is a yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. The item is approved.
Okay, we'll go ahead and move then to item seventeen, which is the associated comp plan amendment with this case. Again, we've set up the geography for you. In this particular case, because the parcel was not in in the municipal boundary, it did not have a designation in the comp plan. But again, we're talking about an eight point four seven acre parcel. And the staff recommendation is that it it and the applicant's request is that it come in as an urban low intensity parcel. Again, we mentioned to you that there's an associated zoning application which will combine this eightish acre parcel with the parcel to the north in order to create a fifty two point three acre parcel for low density residential use. You will consider that again in the zoning case in just a minute. Next slide, please. So this is just the the customary map that shows you where the subject site is relative to the city as a whole. Next, thank you. And this describes the land use and existing conditions in the vicinity. As you can see, the parcel we're discussing here abuts a an urban low intensity parcel to the north. There is urban reserve to the west. That area is not in play here at the moment. So again, you can see that the applicant's request is fairly consistent with the prevailing land use in the area. Next slide, please. Again, we've just talked with you all many times about what urban low intensity is and and the fact that it applies to the least intensively developed areas of the city that still receive city services. Next slide. In this particular case, the area will be served with water and wastewater. In both cases, the subdivision to the north of of the north but one of the subject parcel is fully served and and it's in an open sewer shed. So it's an easy matter to extend water and wastewater services south to this parcel. It it was mentioned a second ago that the this this area does exceed rural response time. That is most certainly true. This is a an edge location of our city. Very unlikely that there will be a fire station built in this vicinity possibly ever, but certainly not for a long time. One of the things that had been in process around the time this application was received was discussion between the city of Moore, the city of Norman, and the city of Oklahoma City for mutual aid agreements. So we did include the fact that the city of Moore Fire Station nearest is about two miles northeast of the subject site. And Norman's Fire Station number eight is located about two and a half miles south southeast. So while initially this would be a situation that would trigger the much discussed consideration of sprinkling, it is also true that if administrative agreements could be worked out with adjacent municipalities, I think there's general consensus among staff that emergency services could be could be provided for this parcel. Next slide, please. This is just a a survey of the zoning in the area. Sorry, office sharing. And then, again, these are the existing land use in the vicinity. There is a low density residential to the north. We've talked about that a couple of different times. This is still a largely undeveloped part of the city. It is slowly changing as as time passes. Next slide, please. So in terms of our recommendations, we recommend that you consider designating this parcel as urban low. We believe that is consistent with development and density patterns in the vicinity and that the applicant will extend water and sewer services to the area. And of course, we talked just now about the emergency services situation. So if the commission has any questions for me, I will try to answer them.
So I I just want to be clear, this is not like a maybe the applicant will extend water and sewer. That is part of the zoning request that's this under consideration. Next item up.
That's correct. And and it was included in their CPA application that this is their intention.
Commissioners, do we have any request, any any questions for Ms. Atkinson? Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard on this item? If not, I'll take a motion.
Commissioner Hinkle, I'll move item seventeen forward.
I'll say it.
I have a motion and a second to approve item number seventeen. Cast your votes, please.
Hinkle is a yes.
Thank you. The motion passes and the item is approved.
Item eighteen is P C ten six fifty six, application by area development to rezone seventeen seventy oh one South Santa Fe Avenue in the A agricultural district, the R one single family district. And this is fifty two point three acres. It's the eight point four seven parcel up for annexation plus forty three acres currently in Oklahoma City. That's zone double A. David Box represents the applicant.
Yeah, good afternoon. Once again, David Box. This is the companion item that is now urban low intensity, and we're asking for your approval on the rezoning application. Like I mentioned, you will see the associated plat on your docket in July. So with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions and good afternoon approval.
There are no T Es. Do we have any questions of our applicants?
This is Commissioner Hinkle. My question about the fire suppression still stands?
Yeah, so we don't agree. The city has the authority through the city council to go enact an ordinance. Short of that, we do not agree to sprinkle the houses. If the city council passes an ordinance, then that's that's the rule. That's the way it works, but to be treated differently, I think, is inequitable. As it was mentioned, I'm sure there will be some sort of interlocal agreement with Moore and Norman to serve this. So we would ask to to, I guess, I just for the purpose of the record, I just I we object to anything related to sprinkling, understanding that this is a straight zoning application and there is no ordinance on the books, so we couldn't condition this anyways, but we object.
I think it, and I'll I'll direct my question to staff, I guess. My understanding of the straight zoning request is that we are really not in a position to condition approval on sprinkling the houses. Am I wrong about that?
No, that's correct. No, that's correct.
Um, you know, I, I really wish that we could, um, get some clarity on this item. I'm, as we've, you know, we've talked about this before. Um, if it's, if it's a safety issue, uh, you know, to me, I think it needs to be done. But it's, it's got to be, uh, a consistently applied standard. And, uh, you know, I, I would really, even if we had the ability to, to require it today, I think I would still be inclined to, to sort of punt this decision. I believe it's entirely likely that there will be, um, cooperative agreements. There are two fire stations, uh, within two miles, you know, in, uh, uh, opposite directions, of course. But, um, you know, the idea that there are going to be homes there that are built, you know, at a, at an urban density, uh, R one, you know, that are beyond the rural response time. That is really problematic for me. But it also seems entirely possible that that's not, that's not actually what will happen. So, um, and, and frankly, on a straight R one request, we don't have the authority to require them to sprinkle, so.
Well, let me weigh in here for a second. This in Ward five is like Commissioner Cravens pick a corner in his neighborhood. I realize that Norman's part of it and Moore's part of it. Within the next five or six years, you're going to have four corners of four hundred home neighborhoods. And if the people of Norman and the people of Moore aren't required to sprinkle their houses, then this applicant just loses out all the way around. Cause I, and I understand about the, the cross-city agreement. That's an awesome thing, but to saddle him with this going in is, uh, to me is just unfair. And I realize we may not have a say so in this, but I just, I had to speak my mind.
I appreciate that. Anyone else have anything they want to say? Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard on this item? If not, I'll take a motion.
I will, uh, move the move case PC ten six five six forward to city council.
I have a motion. Thank you. I have a motion and a second to approve item number eighteen. Cast your votes, please.
Hankel, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The motion, the motion carries. The item's approved.
Nineteen and twenty were deferred. Item twenty-one is a resolution adopting Adapto KC, which is the citywide sustainability plan. It's an amendment to our plan. And he, the planning department has a presentation.
Thank you, JJ. And thank you, uh, Madam Chair, Commissioners. I would also like to take a moment while I pull the presentation up, uh, take a moment to thank City Manager Craig Freeman. Uh, and so the assistant, Assistant City Managers, Aubrey McDermid, Laura Johnson, um, and Kenny Sudal for their, um, support of this effort. Uh, it's been, uh, several years of, uh, extensive research and, uh, planning that went into this document. Um, and this, the City Managers Office created a real, uh, environment for collaboration that will help make this plan a success. Um, so what brought us to today, um, this consideration for the first sustainability plan for, um, Oklahoma City, um, to be adopted as a comprehensive plan amendment. Um, we, uh, held a, uh, public comment period from, um, Earth Day, April twenty-second through, uh, May twentieth, received over, uh, two hundred comments, uh, a lot of very robust comments via email. Um, and so we, uh, we thank the public for their engagement and their interest in this topic and, and all of the topics covered here. Um, and again, for the, for the supportive comments we received. Um, so this plan, uh, it's important to just, to draw distinction between adaptation and sustainability. While they're, uh, we recognize they're not the same thing. Um, sustainability seeks to ensure that we have enough resources for, uh, survival in the future. While adaptation is a, is a constant state of refinement. We, we're looking to, uh, continuously improve, uh, to have, uh, future generations a chance to thrive in the future. So that's what brings us, uh, Adapto KC. Um, and so again, the purpose of this plan is to strengthen our community. Through our research, we found, um, several challenges. We've identified some and we, we've got, uh, we've, we've gained a further, deeper understanding, uh, of, of others. Um, and, and, uh, those, those will be discussed, uh, as I go through each chapter. Um, so the plan again is a, is a long-range policy doc, document, much like ones you've seen, uh, presented in recent days. Bike Walk OKC, um, Preserve OKC, and, and Amp Up OKC, the Arts Master Plan, all pieces of, of Plan OKC, uh, implementation. And so that's where we see this, uh, fit in. It, it dives a little bit deeper into some of the issues that Plan OKC has, uh, has, has identified. And, uh, so this, this plan recommends and prioritizes strategies and actions that will help us achieve, uh, the goals that you'll see outlined here. So what the plan does not do, uh, it does not, it's not an ordinance and it doesn't override existing regulations or policies, uh, or priorities that council may have. Um, and, but it is, um, it, 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 how we vision this coming back to you is in packages or in, in individual proposals, uh, that will be considered, uh, at that time. And so each of those, uh, may have a public process involved. Uh, and we do foresee some of this plan, uh, potentially being implemented through the unified code development, uh, or unified development code update, uh, that is ongoing, uh, I believe in phase two right now. So, uh, why do we need to adapt? Um, that we, we conducted a, uh, a project across five, uh, with cities across five states in the Midwest region, uh, called Climate in the Heartland that helped, uh, helped us see downscaled, uh, projections into the future for the next thirty years and, and thirty years beyond that, on what the future looks like for Oklahoma City in terms of, um, average annual temperatures and, uh, annual precipitation, uh, effectively the effects of climate change. Uh, and so what, what that, in addition to the net, the most recent National Climate Assessment showed us, uh, we can expect an increase of average annual temperatures in Oklahoma City. And, and that's difficult for the layperson to understand, uh, or, or to, to realize what an average annual temperature increase. It means we're going to have a lot more extreme days. Um, in fact, the, the National Climate Assessment goes as far to say, um, the top two percent of hottest days, that is those that are between ninety-five degrees and a hundred, uh, that, that we receive about seven on average every year. Um, we, we could see an increase of about twenty-seven of those, uh, by, by mid-century. So we could have more than a month's worth, uh, of, of super hot days, um, by mid-century. Um, and that also goes for nights. We could see an increase of thirty-five, uh, of the, of the two percent warmest nights, uh, by mid-century. So the, the warming trend that we see and the, the dry, um, hot summers that we see, that again, affect vulnerable populations, affect electricity use, uh, usage, um, and, and, uh, a, a lot of things. Um, that, that is, uh, something that we, we've identified in the plan and have recommendations to improve. Um, again, as far as precipitation goes, we can expect to see about the same amount of rainfall on an annual basis, but we're going to see it in shorter bursts and, and more inundation events, more risk of flash flooding. Um, so what we want to do with our recommendations is, is see.
Thank you.
Excuse me? Okay, I'm sorry. Um, what, what we, what we hope to do is, is, is to, uh, reduce operating and maintenance costs for, for city operations, but also make our community more prepared, uh, and resilient into the future. And that's what, um, that's what our, how will we adapt? That's what our, our recommendations will point to. Uh, we want to mitigate the urban heat island. Uh, and we also want to look at the ways we use electricity, um, energy efficiency, whether it's for city operations, um, or through energy codes for, for new construction, uh, or for retrofit programs, that is revenue. Um, and so we need to, we need to view it as such and treat it as such. Um, and then also we want to look at the way we generate electricity and, and, and rely more on clean sources, on, on renewable, like, uh, renewables, uh, solar, wind, that, that come with also good paying jobs, um, that can help, uh, diversify our economy, uh, and, and, and keep us a little bit, um, keep our air a little bit cleaner. So the outline of the plan, we have four chapters, uh, of content, uh, in terms of topics. So energy productivity, that's where we, we talk a lot about energy generation and, and how we use it. Um, natural and built environment, uh, air quality and waste reduction. Um, and then at the intro, we do talk about the history of the office. The office was created, uh, in two thousand nine, twenty-ten through the stimulus package, the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act. Uh, Oklahoma City received about five point four million dollars, uh, to implement a series of projects, one of which was created, created an Office of Sustainability. So that's why we're here and that's why this plan is here. Um, and then again, we have policies and implementation chapter that covers, uh, how we plan to do this, the priorities we have, and start by dates, which is important to note, are not wait until dates. Um, those are, so we can be opportunistic as implementation, uh, presents itself. So the first chapter, and I'll go through each chapter and talk about the, just the goals and initiatives at a high level. Um, and if there's any questions, feel free to, to jump in as I go. Um, but for energy productivity, we want to reduce emissions associated with energy consumption. And so again, that's, that's twofold. We want to, um, be more efficient in how we use power and we want to, uh, use clean sources of energy, uh, or to generate electricity. Um, and so, um, what, there, there are several ways to do that. Um, but, but one important factor of why we should do that is electricity right now is, is cheap, uh, in terms of the price of it, um, in Oklahoma. And, and, and that's across all sectors compared to national averages. Um, we have cheap cost, or cheap, excuse me, cheap prices of electricity. Um, and what that does, uh, that, that's actually means that we, we, we use a lot more than other places because if something is low, low priced, um, a lot of it more will be used. So we do use more per person than the national average, uh, which means, um, low, low income households, households that may not be weatherized, they face a larger energy burden, um, whereby they spend more of their, um, at their, their income, their total income, with a greater percentage of that on just paying their utility bills. Um, and so that's something that we, we, we think, um, it is a challenge. It needs to be addressed and, and can be addressed, um, through the tools we, we lay out in the, in the plan. Um, so again, I, I mentioned diversify local and state economies through, uh, job creation. Uh, and that's both through energy efficiency and renewable energy jobs. With energy code compliance also can come, uh, job creation. So, um, that's, that's where we want to go with the, with the energy productivity. Natural and built environment, this chapter looks, uh, largely at water quality and the urban heat island effect. Um, so the urban heat island effect is, uh, the phenomenon where, uh, urban areas, where there's a lot of asphalt, a lot of buildings, um, things that absorb heat and thermal energy throughout the day, they can be up to twenty-two degrees hotter than, uh, a nearby undeveloped area, a greenfield. Um, and so that can have really negative impacts for vulnerable populations or, uh, people with respiratory illnesses. Or if there's a global pandemic that's a respiratory illness going on, that, those can have, have its devastating effects. Um, and so with, with, uh, the, the mitigation of the urban heat island, we want to increase vegetation. We want to preserve old growth trees, um, and, and, and do that in a strategic way, in a meaningful way, not a broad blanket approach, um, that's, that's going to have unintended consequences. So again, as these, as each of these recommendations come back with, with proposals, there will be engagement with developers, engagement with, uh, affected stakeholders, um, that will be able to move these forward in a really meaningful way. Um, and then we also want to, uh, uh, look at food insecurity issues and, and be sure that residents have the ability to grow their own food. And, and one of the, uh, the most preeminent comments that we've heard was the ability to sell the food that they grow at their house, cottage food industry. Um, but it's legal at the state levels, but there are, there are zoning, um, aspects of it that make it, uh, not allowable in, in Oklahoma City right now. Um, so, uh, diving deeper into that, low impact development, uh, can help catch that first flush of, of rainfall. As I mentioned, with an increase of inundation rainfall events, um, we could see a lot more of that pollution from streets and parking lots. Oklahoma City is made up of, uh, our total surface area is four percent made of parking lots, um, just the land use of parking lots. And so that's where we store cars. Cars are dirty and have oil and gasoline and things like that. And as it rains, all of that, that first five minutes of rainfall sweeps the pollution straight into our, our natural water system. Um, there's no treatment, there's no pretreatment before it reaches our lakes and streams and rivers. And so that means we, we have to treat that before it becomes drinkable water again. Um, and so that's, that's an important aspect where low impact development, rain gardens, bio retention cells, these types of things can help improve the water quality of our stormwater runoff. Um, and then also we want to increase, uh, pervious surfaces, um, so that we have, we have less of this. We can decrease the volume and velocity of, of, in, of rainfall events and inundation events, uh, by doing so. The air quality chapter, uh, largely we're looking at, uh, mobile sources that contribute to our emissions here. Um, so we have greenhouse gases, uh, that contribute to, um, uh, climate change effectively. And then we have, uh, uh, the, the ozone precursors that are measured by DEQ and, and reported to EPA, um, that affect our attainment designation. And, and that's a, that's a threshold set, um, by the EPA, that, that, that DEQ monitors for us. And effectively the, the, the precursors for ozone are volatile organic compounds. Um, and, uh, I just spaced on the other one, volatile organic compounds and, uh, uh, nitrous oxides. And, and those, when those are present, and, and that's basically exhaust from, from vehicles, uh, so from mobile sources. When, when, when those are present on hot windless days with sunlight, that's what creates ground level ozone or smog, as it's commonly referred to. So that's what's measured, uh, in terms of whether we're in attainment or not. And that's a very important, um, that's a very important distinction, uh, to, to, to remain in attainment because, uh, there are studies, uh, Austin Realm Rock is one, that I believe it was anywhere between, uh, twenty-seven and forty-one billion dollars, uh, over the course of about thirty or forty years, that it could end up costing their economy, uh, if they were to go, uh, a high level of non-attainment. And there are, there are varying stages of, of attainment. So it's important to reduce the emissions. It's important to support transit, to support, um, bike walk OKC and, and multimodalism, to be able, um, use our vehicles less. Uh, but we also recognize that, that our commutes right now are, are by and large more than eighty percent, eighty-six percent, uh, single occupancy vehicles. And so by doing, by, uh, by, we, we don't anticipate that in the future, in the next ten years or so, being cut in half or anything without the introduction of, you know, regional rail or something like that. Um, and, and so what we, what we think we can do and what we think a real opportunity is, um, is, is being able to convert that to low or no emission. Uh, so by encouraging the use of alternative fuels, electric vehicles, uh, compressed natural gas, uh, these types of things can reduce, uh, the amount of congestion and, and, or, excuse me, can reduce the amount of emissions associated, uh, with our commutes. Um, and then also, uh, we, we want to address, uh, sustainable transportation infrastructure funding. How we get, uh, you know, funding for, to maintain roads and, and, and streets, those are, uh, that's through, a lot of times through gas taxes and, and, but in Oklahoma, uh, since FY ninety-six, and that's nineteen ninety-six, um, on average, since then through, I believe FY eighteen, um, we averaged about a million dollars total, um, annually, uh, in, in terms of how much gas tax of the City of Oklahoma City receives. And we receive, uh, you know, this was something I, I reinforced in, in the study session that we held. Uh, we receive zero, zero dollars in diesel tax. We're, we're at the crossroads of America at, at I thirty-five and I forty. We have a lot of truck traffic and expect to have an increasing amount of truck traffic, uh, given the way that, uh, online shopping is increasing, um, and, and these types of things. We, we don't anticipate freight traffic slowing down and especially doing less damage to our streets in Oklahoma City. And so, um, that's, that's a real policy issue or, uh, something that's, that's, uh, in the apportionment formula at the state level, um, that we would look to, um, look to address. Uh, in waste reduction, uh, it's, it's fairly straightforward. We want to, we want to send less, uh, stuff to landfills in, in, in a variety of ways. And some things are hazardous, medical sharps and pharmaceuticals and have water, water quality problems. Um, so we want to make sure people have the right avenues. Sometimes people flush those things and that's, that's not where it needs to go. Um, that causes other problems. So having avenues for tho, that type of waste, um, as well as generally expanding beyond, um, expanding the focus just beyond the residential curbside programs, uh, which again, we have, have made leaps and bounds of improvements and have, have collected a tremendous amount, uh, more materials, uh, since the switch to ninety-six gallon rolling carts. Uh, I believe participation is, is, is as high as it's ever been. Um, and so interest is very high in, in, in diverting more waste from landfills. And again, creating that circular economy where we have, uh, materials that are valued, therefore creating demand, um, and, and, and are be able to be purchased. We want to leverage the city's purchasing power, uh, to be able to buy materials with recycled content. And we also want to encourage, um, other industries to do so as well. Um, and so the more, the more, uh, materials that are available, uh, the, the more likely there will be products made with recycled content. Um, and again, we can, we can have that closed loop cycle. Um, and again, here's my contact information. Uh, I failed to put the website, uh, okc.gov backslash sustain. Uh, but again, I, I thank you for your time and consideration and, and happy to answer any questions.
Hey, TO, this is, uh, Asa. Um, I, I hope you'll excuse me, um, uh, paraphrasing, you know, my interpretation of the document for, for, I guess, everyone else, but it's my, I guess, I guess to put it all in a sentence, I would say that, um, the City of Oklahoma City, like most American cities right now, is headed toward financial ruin if we don't take these things serious. And I, and I mean that, and we look at these things and we kind of like, you know, think that, you know, there might be quote unquote cute ideas or, or nice ideas, but these are very necessary. I think everybody should be taking this stuff deadly seriously. Um, and, uh, that's, that's my, uh, that's my take.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman, very, very much for your presentation and for all your hard work. I think we do take it pretty seriously. And I'm just so pleased that we have taken now this additional step that we're moving in the right direction, that we have a framework that's going to help guide us as we take those steps. And I think the city's commitment to sustainability is very real and will only increase over time. But thank you so very, very much for your expertise and your effort and your time and your energy.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention the other half of the Sustainability Office, our Associate Planner Ryan Baker, who put countless hours into this plan and has spent the last three months being the epitome of a of a public servant and 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 helping the emergency manager with with understanding of and collection of data and 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 responding to the COVID-19 pandemic. So you know, jack of all trades and and you know, you you can you can put him anywhere and he'll and he'll work until he can't work anymore. So a a big lift for him and and a big thank you to him, too.
Absolutely, absolutely. Other commissioners have comments they'd like to make?
I'd like to echo Janice. You got you got to put a lot of work into that. Thank you for some insight.
Thank you, Commissioner.
So do I have anybody who wishes to be heard on this topic? If not, then I will take a motion. Our resolution is to adopt DAPTO KC.
This is Commissioner Highsmith. I'd love to make the motion to adopt the resolution for adopting DAPTO KC.
I have a motion and a second to approve item number 21. Cast your votes, please.
Pinkles, yes.
Thank you. The motion carries and the item is approved. Thank you. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Item 22 is the election of planning commission officers. Every year at this time, in accordance with the bylaws, the Chair and Vice Chair are open for nomination.
Madam Chair, this is Rusty, if I may. I had a couple of conversations on this recently and I'm prepared to make a motion if I can make a few comments. Is that okay?
Of course, yes.
Okay, thanks. I had I did have a couple of conversations recently and I recall a discussion last year at this time. We discussed the arguable advantages to rotating the chair on occasion. Commissioner Cravens was, and I believe still is interested and willing to serve as Chair. While I will be making that motion, first, I want to comment on how well you have served us and the city as Chair. Motion to to rotate the chair is not at all a result of any reflection on your service. And to the contrary, you you've served us tremendously in many important ways. But but I do feel and I've had these conversations about us rotating, I I believe you, I asked the other day. I think you have served as a Chair since every one of us have joined in just the last few years. We have all served under your your chairmanship and it's very appreciated. And if it passes, I did, I'll let everybody know I had a conversation with with Madam Chair Powers that she, I'm delighted she indicated she would like to vote in favor of it as well. And I'm more delighted she indicated she would, of course, continue to serve on the commission with us. And with that, unless anyone has anything further, I'm prepared to make that motion with respect to Chair. If somebody prefers to first talk about a vice chair, I did not have any conversations on that. I do have an idea. But I can stick with just the Chair at this time and make a motion or we can discuss both.
And I I think I I would like to make a couple of comments if I could. We did have this discussion last year about whether or not it is advisable to rotate the chairmanship. I I think that's not something that I feel as strongly about as perhaps some other people do. As you know, I served for many, many, many years under John Yocel's chairmanship, and that worked very well. He, of course, did not have have a ward to represent. He was at large. And so he was free to tend, you know, to the duties of the chairmanship. And we we were never inclined during that time to to consider replacing him. And I think that there is a certain unification of effort that is that is important for the planning commission during the time that I have served as Chair, I've tried to make as many of the motions that and votes that we have taken unanimous as as I could, sometimes voting even against my own. I won't say against my own conscience, but my own inclinations, never against my better judgment, I would say, but against my inclinations. Because I think it is very important that people understand and recognize the position and power of the planning commission. Planning commission is a statutory body. You may have noticed during the time that I've served as Chair, I don't I don't talk about us making recommendations to city council except in unusual circumstances such as the annexation vote that we had earlier today. If you look at the statutes, the planning commission acts. The city council is free to overrule the planning commission if it chooses to do so. But I I don't think of the planning commission as recommending body, and I don't think that that's what the statutes indicate that it is. So I've been I've been careful about that. And and another thing that I've done during the time that I was on in the chair is to try to and this was difficult for me. We all have so many connections with the development community and with the people who appear in front of us. I had been practicing land use law, you know, many, many, many years before I came to the planning commission and had have many, many friends who appear in front of us regularly. But I think it is really important that we guard against any kind of perception in the public, right, wrong, or indifferent, and it's wrong 99.9% of the time. You know, that the fix is in or that the whole thing's rigged or that it doesn't matter what people say. We hear people tell us that all the time. It doesn't really matter, you know, that they come down and speak to us. And I think it is so very, very important and vital that they are part of the process. So when when we spoke about this, I think what I told you was that if Commissioner Cravens is inclined to serve as Chair and is desirous of doing that, I don't think that I will oppose that, not because I'm tired of being the Chair, not because I've accomplished everything I would like to accomplish. The wheels of government move unusually slowly sometimes. But because I think it's very important that we act, especially to choose our Chair in a unanimous fashion. So that's all I had to say.
Well, well, thanks. And not to act like I'm serving as Chair through this motion, but does anybody else have any comments before I try to make a motion? Yeah.
Rusty, I mean, Commissioner La Forge, I I want to make one comment echoing what you said in commending Chairwoman Powers, because I know that she's just done a fantastic job. And I hope that she knows too, that just because we might rotate right now does not mean your turn may not come again. Be aware of that.
Well, I appreciate the kind thoughts.
Thanks, Commissioner Pennington. I thought about that as well, because last year, what we discussed is maybe rotating every year and going all the way around every commissioner and including myself. There were a few of us that did not want to go that extreme to the rotation. So yeah, it it may come back around to the few who are even interested and willing to serve as the Chair. So thank you, Commissioner. With that,
Is there anyone else?
My other idea, if unless somebody wants to speak up about vice chair, since Commissioner Pennington just spoke so eloquently, he was the one that I did not have a conversation about. But I'm curious, Kamal, if somebody else is interested. You you're always very thoughtful, well scripted when it comes time for you to make your own motion. I wondered if you would be willing to, I think you'd do a great job filling in when we had our Chair not here. I can include that in a motion if unless you object, Kamal, or if somebody else feels strongly they want to serve as vice Chair.
This is Asa, and I would second Kamal.
I'm happy to serve, assuming there's nobody else who wants to do it. But if anybody else wants to do it, it will not offend me if they if they want to do it. But I'm happy to. Thank you.
Not it.
Does anyone else have anything they want to say? I have a motion and a second to appoint or elect Commissioner Cravens as Chair, Commissioner Pennington as Vice Chair. So I have a motion and a second. Would you cast your votes?
Ancles, yes.
Thank you. The motion carries.
Sounds so enthused, Matt.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And thank you again, Janice, Chairwoman Powers. Really appreciate the way you've served as our Chair since I first joined and we both first joined. I I very much mean that. Thank you so much for the way you've handled chairmanship.
Oh, I appreciate those kind thoughts. Thank you. And so that brings us to the end of our agenda, I believe. The other items having been continued. Next item is additional items. I don't know what in the world that would be at this point, communications and reports, planning committees. Did you want to speak at this time?
Yeah, my my, yes, ma'am. My thinking was that that would be under, that would be one of these, what goes under additional items, that would be this or other business, but I'll I'll defer to you on it.
Let's go with planning commission committees.
Okay, so as you guys may or may not remember, we appointed a sort of a very quick ad hoc drainage committee. That was myself, Commissioner Claire, Commissioner Powers. The idea behind that subcommittee was to root out just kind of the information behind the comment that appeared in our staff reports back in May about drainage that was objected to by some of the applicants during that hearing. And I circulated a essentially an email that was written by Jared Norris from Public Works. He was gracious enough to write some the the comment itself along with some color to it. I circulated that memo as we discussed as a subcommittee to essentially the six members of the engineering community that appear in front of the planning commission on a very regular basis, just to get their feedback. That feedback was received over the course of the last week. I circulated that. Anything I received, I passed along to Commissioner Claire and Commissioner Powers. I had a call today and follow up with staff, with Michelle January and with Jared Norris about this issue. And I just want to give you guys a short update. So there's the history. Here's the update. After talking it over with them, they requested a little bit more time to craft some language. I wanted to be uber respectful of the fact that this was staff's note and that we're trying to be timely in staff and getting something agreed upon that could be included in staff reports. They're the ones who who made that request. And I and I'm sure I have no objection to that. I just hate to delay it because we only have one meeting in July, so it would be August meeting before this note could be back. I do want to articulate a couple of things that I found interesting that I'd pass along at this point to commissioners, and I certainly want to give them a chance to comment as well if they'd like to do so. But as I said, Jared prepared a memo. I am more than happy to circulate this to any planning commissioner who'd like to see it. Was trying to spare you an email, frankly, but Jared proposed some revised language that I think makes a lot of sense. And and chapter 16 is where these ordinances are found. In summary, there's two components when detention is required. One is when there is known downstream flooding of structures. And for the lawyers in the group, that's a term of art. For the non lawyers in the group, it means that term is defined in the law and structures. And if you read that definition, there is pushback from the engineering community about how that term is being enforced. So what is actually a structure and what is not? Secondarily, there was brought up through the discussion that there is a drainage map that highlights where areas of flood and prone areas known flooding issues exist. This map is not a public document. It is not widely circulated. It is not published on a website. It is not available. And I, after discussion with staff, I have to say I take some issue with that. Primarily because developers know, I know Commissioner Claire and I visited about this a little bit in the engineering world. If you want to know if a site is subject to flooding, you pull the FEMA flood map and you look and you see if you're going to have to deal with FEMA before you can build within the flood zone, depending on how it's classified. If there's going to be a map that staff uses to decide where and when detention should be utilized, it should be a publicly and readily available document. That does two things to the development process. It improves the predictability of outcome. And frankly, it gives us as planning commissioners something to swing back against the development community when they bring forth an application that this map exists on and they say, we don't want to do detention here, or we want to exclude this comment. We can say the map was there. It was publicly available. You could have reviewed it. You didn't. So it gives us a little bit more teeth to hold them accountable. And and I'm really not sure why it hasn't been available up to this point, but I would stress to staff that I think they should make this map available and update it regularly and provide it to the public in some easily accessible means. I think it will also cut down on the amount of calls and correspondence that has to take place to get answers about whether detention will be required in certain areas. So those were the two things out of the
Commissioner Commissioner Cravens, let me ask you, is is that very issue of the of the need to update it frequently? Is that what has kept it from becoming a public document is is the concern that, you know, they they do it based, at least in part, I don't know what all goes into it, but at least in part based on reported flooding incidents, is it is it some reluctance to hold it out as a definitive document because it is so often or regularly updated, do you think?
I I'll also let staff comment on that. What I would say is staff within the existing ordinance, and they articulated their plans to try to amend or or alter this ordinance. But they do have the tools at their disposal within the ordinance because one of the other conditions, Janice, in the ordinance is it says known downstream flooding of structures or if it is determined that development of subject property will cause or contribute to flooding to existing downstream structures, then they can require. So I think all the map would do is it's 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 in practical sense, what it would do is it would let these engineers go and look at this map and see that Drainage and Public Works has designated this area is becoming, you know, we we essentially are going to say that it is contributing to downstream flood development here would do that. If that map would allow them to see it, they're having that conversation with their with the applicants, with their clients on the front end. Instead of letting it get all the way through the process where they've sort of advanced this development plan, set up a site plan, done all this, then they come to planning commission for approval, and now they're just going to fight for their project because they've spent all this money and time doing it, right? So that, I mean, that's where the predictability comes in. And frankly, there's some transparency there that I'm not totally comfortable with either about not having these maps available if they're going to be used to make these types of decisions. So I, that's a, that's, I just wanted to, because I said, you know, I'm not there representing me. I'm there on our collective behalf and I'm trying to bring information back to you. I would summarize that as the conflict points for the correspondence I saw. Commissioner Claire, Commissioner Powers, you guys were in on that correspondence, so I'll let you add anything to that that you want to. And then, as I said, I'd certainly like to have staff get a chance to 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 respond or make their make their points if they'd like to.
So the one thing based on discussion that you and I had and looking over the the comments and all around, it seems to me that it's important for us to be focused and, and correct me if I'm wrong about this, but my understanding is that this really is an issue that impacts PUDs and SPODs rather than straight zoning. So we're really just talking about PUDs and SPODs.
Yes, ma'am.
And part of the, how we got to this problem was language contained in an old PUD because there's no guarantee that those things are going to be developed immediately that indicated that no detention would be required. Years later, when it was determined that it was needed, it was like, oh no, but it says we don't have to do that. So one of the things that I think we should all consider, the possibility of, is simply that we stop doing that. That we make it clear through whatever comment or decision we make here about how to proceed that those determinations are simply not going to be made at the zoning stage. They really are very, very seldom, if ever ripe for determination at zoning. The money, time and effort to prepare drainage, detailed drainage plans has not been put in at that point for reasons that make perfect economic sense as far as development goes. And so, I mean, it, rather than try to craft a huge big fix for this problem, I think we ought to at least consider the possibility that we simply make it clear that that's not part of what is being decided at the zoning stage. It's already not being decided with respect to straight zoning. Why should PUDs and SPODs be any different?
I 100% agree with all that and, and, and dare I speak for them, so did all of the engineering folks that we reached out to in reference to that, that you're correct, straight zoning, the drainage ordinance applies and that they're not trying to use this. So the fact that we would include a note that would make that clear does not give them any heartburn. It was the inclusion of the note as a technical evaluation, which, and I, I tried to call Sarah once today and she wasn't in her office the time I called. And I don't, I didn't know who else to call with Jeff out, but I'm curious from staff's perspective too, when we get, when we get to them and they have a chance to comment, is there really a difference between this being a, a comment in the staff report and a technical evaluation? Because if it's going to universally apply to all these applications, I don't see the need for it to be a technical evaluation. And I'm really stealing that comment from Commissioner Claire, made that point, and I think that's exactly right. And so that's why we went back to them refining language that would be included in the staff reports on a go forward for SPODs and PUDs. Because everything you said, I totally agree with and frankly, so do they and they had, they had no objection to that.
To me, that just makes a lot more sense. I mean, you know, I, I, I think, first of all, Public Works is welcome to put whatever comment they want to make in a staff report about their review and how they see it and what they want everybody to know. And it's there and it's, you know, clearly available to be read. The, the actual status of a technical evaluation, you know, I, I'm not sure I agree that it becomes part of a PUD. Maybe I'm wrong about that, but it is a condition of approval. I get that. But you know, it's not really added to the document in a way that makes the document cumbersome. That's not my concern. But it, I think it is important for everybody, not just the developers and the applicant and the people involved on this side, staff and so on, but pub, the public, those neighbors that live out there to understand that that decision is going to get made at a time when a lot more is understood about how the actual development is going to work. The nuts and bolts part of that process.
Yeah. Commissioner Claire, you have anything you want to add to?
No, Scott, I think you, you summed it up very well, very eloquently. Yeah, I just, you know, through the course of our conversations, I think, you know, it is those comments, I think, I feel personally are most appropriate in the staff report, not as a TE. And then just in general, you know, as, as applicants come to us, they may be the first, the first application out in the middle of nowhere and, and who knows what that's going to look like in 10 years if they don't, if they don't do anything. You know, for the first 10 years, every property around them could be developed and that's going to affect drainage and detention. And to have that, to have that in there is that they're not held to, held to the standards of current, you know, building code, then that needs to happen, so.
Yep, agreed. Jared Norris did a frankly wonderful job representing the interests of Public Works in our conversation and made a lot of really great points, none of which I argued with nor the developer. So I think everybody's on the same page. It's just making sure that we do this the right way. I think that's really what this was all about. So I don't know, I'm sure Jared's on the line still. If he wants to add any comment or thought to that, I certainly would welcome him to have a chance to comment.
Thank you, Scott. I, I do think that you and, and Janice, very well spoken on this point and I agree with, I agree with both of you. I, I think public work, from Public Works' perspective, you know, we're trying to provide as, as much information as we can to the development community so that as, as forthright and upfront as possible. And I think, you know, us providing the information as, as soon as we can, you know, more information is always better. And I, and I agree with Janice that, you know, this is, and you, Scott, and the Planning Commission in general that, you know, this is, this kind of evaluation is, is really, should be subject, I think, when plans are submitted to Public Works. And, and we're just, you know, Public Works is just trying to provide the information as, as soon as we can to the development community so they can, to help them with their decision processes as, as soon as, as soon as, as soon as we can. You know, the, the map, when, when you state the map, the map is really, is, is a good start. It's a good start of, you know, where that evaluation begins. It's not, you know, and, and so when, when we make that, the, the initial comment on the, the, on the, you know, the, the Planning Commission, you know, on the Planning Commission cases, that's where that information comes from. But we, we really view it as kind of a, as a, as a beginning place of this is what the map says. I'd, I'd love to, you know, make it more public, you know, especially the process that we have, you know, and really, and I, and I really, you know, I did have time to look over the comments that the consultants made and there were some great comments there. And I, I would love to continue to work with you, Scott, have the ability to work with you and the Planning Commission and the, and the Drainage Committee to really come, come to a solution, come to a proposal that, you know, and if it's just, you know, updating a note that's provided on the staff report to just really help clarify what the process is and how we go about making the decisions that are, are made during the, the planning review stage.
You know, with respect to the, the issue of the time, I mean, I, I, I don't have any objection whatsoever for, for staff to take whatever time they think they need to get this right. It's better to be right than to be quick. And really the, the impetus is from them. They were the ones who were seeking the change. So if they are not in a hurry to have it happen, then, you know, I'm certainly not. If it's got to be August, you know, that's fine.
Thank you, thank you, Janice. I think that's correct. I mean, I, 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 I don't see that, that, you know, I mean, I think we need to take the time to get it right. You know, I, I think that's appropriate. Thank you.
Well, so my suggestion would just be, you know, Jared, the ball is in, in, in your court, you and, and Public Works' court to get language back that would be included in staff reports. I think the right thing to do is to take your refined language circulated for any final comments, whether that, whether that comes before the July meeting or before our first meeting in August. Once we receive it, we can circulate it and await any feedback. And then we'd be prepared to, you know, sort of introduce it here in Planning Commission Committees at a later date and just sort of, you know, for lack of a better way of turning it, blessing it and so that everybody knows what, what to expect going forward.
That sounds good, Scott. Thank you.
Thank you and thank you for your work on this. Okay, so there aren't any other Planning Commission Committees that I'm aware of. Planning Commission members? Does anybody have anything they want to share? Planning Department? Development Services?
No.
Municipal Counselor?
No.
Citizens to be heard. I understand we do have someone who's been waiting patiently all this time. Citizen to be heard.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, is it me, Taylor McKenzie? Am I, am I the only one?
Entirely possibly.
Okay. Hi, my name's Taylor McKenzie and this has been very interesting. This is the first Planning Commission meeting I've ever listened to. I just wanted to thank you for the opportunity to ask a question. I would also first like to acknowledge that this city and state, which you and I call home, is stolen land. That thought should never leave our minds as this city continues to grow and our indigenous leaders should be invited to the table at every city planning meeting. My question is, are there any economic justice measures in place to make sure that there are equitable, equitable, not equal opportunities for more black and brown owned businesses to start and/or flourish if they're already going? If so, can you please explain those? And if you are not already enacting economic justice reforms, then I think it's time to start listening to our black leadership. You can watch the streamed conversation on structural racism within our city, state and country. That was all last night by six black women, all leaders of our community, if you are looking for people to bring to the table. Black Lives Matter Oklahoma City is also very easy to find on Facebook. It was the city who systematically redlined the east side as well as much of the south side of OKC. That's, it is the city's responsibility to act deliberately to reverse these injustices. It is critical that the leaders of these communities in which you are developing and redeveloping are not only brought once to the table, but are consulted at every step along the way. Now, black and brown owned businesses are systematically prioritized. For example, within the district districts and opportunity zones. We need equity, not equality. All institutions and levels of government in this city, state, country have played key roles in the web of four centuries of systematic racism within this country. I would like to know what steps the City Planning Commission are taking to enact real equitable change. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. I'm not sure we're going to be prepared to offer you much of an explanation in response today. And, you know, we're not really a legislative body in the sense that we're not in a position to enact, but I do really very much appreciate you coming to speak to us. There are a number of initiatives that we have been discussing with respect to particularly housing. And I, I don't, I don't want to monopolize this part of this conversation. There are probably other people who would be better equipped to answer than I am.
Janice, I'd love to jump in. This is Asa. I do think, like, I guess, I guess first, like, I do believe that the Commission was intended as a legislative body. I think mostly we do administrative stuff at this point. But I, I think the legislative part that we, that we are taking on right now is, is the zoning code update. And I believe zoning, as most of you know, is, has been a tool for, you know, whether intentional or not, I do believe, you know, to some degree, it has been institutionally intentional. But there's, there's been a racist history in zoning. And I think that the city right now has the opportunity with our zoning code update to address some of that. And it is absolutely, at least for this commissioner, part of my intention to, to try to find the ability for, for equity and equitable solutions to some of these, you know, historic issues that cities, that is a part of our city's history. So I, I, I believe that the speaker, the citizen that's been heard is, is correct in a lot of what he said. And I would, I would answer by saying there's, there's several of us on the commission that, that are aware and understand our history well and are active in pursuing what I would call, you know, action, I suppose, in that regard. So I, I think the, the citizen and I think the intentions are correct and we're, we're making that attempt.
Can I, can I, this is Kamal. Can I just piggyback off of what Asa said? Because I, I agree with, with, with what he said. And I think that the code update is our opportunity to make the history right. Because that is where we have legislative purview. As far as me personally, because I know that the commission has limited ability to directly influence a lot of the policies that he, that the speaker mentioned in an official way. But I can tell you that I use the platform that we've been provided as being planning commissioners and take that opportunity seriously to go to groups that do advocate for the kind of changes that you're talking about. And I do have regular conversations with Councilwoman Nice about those policies too. And I think it would be nice in light of these issues being highlighted now for us to talk more broadly about how we can engage more commissioners in that conversation. But I appreciate the speaker bringing that all to our attention, but it, it's on my mind too. And I make perhaps, one of the things that Commissioner Highsmith had me do was read The Color of Law, which was a spectacular book and I highly encourage all of the other commissioners to read it as well. Because it definitely changed my perspective about equity and the history of planning and zoning in, in our, in the, across the United States and Oklahoma City's unique history and involvement in that as well. So not in any way trying to downplay it. I'm going to continue to be a fighter for equity in this city, for black and brown people, all people in Oklahoma City. And I, I think, I think we should all as commissioners use our position to fight for that, that economic justice.
May, may I also add something? Sarah Welch, Planning Department staff. I just want to tell Taylor that you absolutely, if you're not already signed up for updates on our code update project, it's a great time to get involved right now. You can email codeupdate@okc.gov. You can email me personally at sarah.welch@okc.gov or you can call me at 297-2283. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we do very much appreciate you taking the time to come and talk to us.
Yes, thank you for all the responses. I'm glad that there are members on the board who find this important. And thank you for the recommendation, Color of All can check it out. And I will sign up and, yeah, are there any other suggestions for? It's, it's hard for me to navigate right now. I'm just now kind of jumping into getting involved with my city government. And I wonder, it's kind of hard for me to navigate who has the answers to these questions. And, you know, like who is making these decisions? I understand it's engineers, it's you guys, it's city council people. It seems so spread out and hard to navigate. And do you have any suggestions as to who to kind of poke and ask and remind that these issues are very important to the city's citizens?
Sarah, if, if you wouldn't mind, if you'd share my, my contact information whenever he gets in contact with you. I'd love to have a coffee. This is Commissioner Highsmith, by the way. I'd love to have a coffee. I'd be happy to share a copy of the, the book that Kamal recommended. I have many more copies in my possession. And I'd love to just talk about, at least from my perspective, you know, the, the other ways that you could get involved that I would feel would be, you know, most effective, I suppose. Although I'm not in any, in any way in authority on this and obviously I'd, I'd love to hear any other comments at the other commissioner.
You know, I think it's kind of an all of the above thing, you know, you, it's, it's hard to know, even for people who, who are familiar with the system, it's hard to know, you know, which door you can get your foot in that's going to be an effective outcome. know, you know, which door you can get your foot in that's going to be an effective outcome. Sarah can certainly get you started in terms of participation. And yes, I, I, I would encourage you to, you know, ask everybody you meet, you know, ask everybody you come in contact with, the same questions you were asking us.
Great. Thank you very much. I took some notes and I will be reaching out.
Thank you again.
All right. I'm going to get off the line. Okay. Goodbye.
And Sarah, when he contacts you, I'd like for you to give him my contact information as well.
Will do.
And, okay, other business.
Janice, this is Cindy. We have a few participants that have been on the line for, throughout the meeting. So I'm not sure if they're wanting to speak or if they're just listening.
Okay. Are you wanting to speak? Is there anybody out there who has anything that they want to share with us? That's all the people we had actually signed up, but we're more than happy to hear from you if you are wanting to be heard.
Star six to unmute.
Yes, thank you. I don't hear any takers. Well, in the absence of, of any other persons wanting to speak, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Decided, Nate.
How about let's do this by voice. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Very adjourned. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Have a great weekend, everybody.
Bye.
Good job, everyone.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, Janice.